Well, I guess we're all set, right?
Yep.
We're ready.
I've called the Pownell Select Board to order a regular meeting Thursday, September 22nd at 7:08. For the agenda approval, minutes of 9:816, warrants, mail, road business, Route 346, mobile home site, town office carpet, the status of the brick project. And our new business, Jim Gilbert is here. We'll be discussing roadside dumping procedure and we got a policy review. You get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Get a motion on the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Warrants. Payroll, 91816. And that was $7,856.43. Accounts payable, 91616. And that is, uh... The only wonder, much significance there, I guess, is our new front door and our small roof there, keep you out of the rain, which is a very nice improvement to the building. The $1,200. And the payroll, 91116. And that was $6,705.73. Accounts payable for 92316. And that was $25,289.77. The bigger ones there was, uh... Bennetton Sheriff's, $2,890, health insurance for $2,471. Electricity, $4,071. And fixing some divots and stuff in the cemeteries, that was $1,800. And payroll transfer, IRS, that was 2811. Them were the large ones on that.
There were several tax overpayments processed.
Yeah, there was a few tax overpayments, uh... Which... They weren't huge, but...
But there was some.
$235 and stuff like that. So if that's... That's what that is. I get a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mail, we had, uh... We did get some better financing, uh... For our truck for down at the sewer plant. It just has to be paid each year instead of monthly, uh... Which is fine, that was all budgeted for that, but it's, uh... It was only 1 point something, 1.8, 1.6 versus 6.3, so it was quite a savings.
But, you know, very reasonable, uh...
Mm-hmm.
Fees.
So we gotta sign the paperwork for that, that's, uh... That we're getting that through, uh, People's Bank up here.
Okay, need to take a motion.
I need a motion to sign that.
I'll make a motion to sign.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There was a couple of questions about when we were gonna get the truck.
What's up with this?
All that paperwork was, uh... Was that we're gonna sign it or won't we?
Yeah, we're gonna sign that too.
Alright.
This one. There's a bunch of them there.
Yeah, well, bank. But there was a little bit of concern about... A person asked me about, "Well, we haven't got the truck yet." Which really doesn't matter. Uh, I talked to Darcy, the money is already, uh... Been budgeted and everything, we're gonna pay for the... It doesn't matter if we get the truck two, three months later because they're putting body on it and things. We're still gonna get the truck and we're still gonna pay the year's payment. So we'll be current, we won't be pushing it further back.
Right. That makes sense.
Also, in other words, you're gonna stay within your fiscal budgets with budgeting?
That's right. We're gonna stay within that and we're gonna, uh... Cause it isn't like it was an emergency, they're not on foot down there, they still have a truck.
It's a very favorable interest rate though.
Yeah.
Good interest rate.
Yeah, it's very, very good.
The last ones for the tri-door?
Yeah. Oh, she's signed it. Okay.
There's three spots.
Every one of those spots.
Yep.
Am I right?
Yep. Except for the last one.
Okay. You watch me, I'll go ahead and try to sign the back one.
Yeah, that's why I'm watching you. Ronnie said, "Watch Henry."
Yeah, okay. Well, he knows me by now.
Alan will see it, could she leave?
The last one, you do not, right?
Yep, don't touch it. Don't touch it, there she is.
Alan's here, so...
You signed your papers, Alan.
Thank you.
We're all set there. So, uh... We got a letter here, State of Vermont, we're gonna do PFOA sampling over at the transfer station, uh... Because they found it in the other transfer station up in Shasberry, their municipal landfill and stuff, so they've, uh... That's gonna cost about $500, uh... To do that. We gotta sign a thing here for... It's Stand Tech. They're gonna do this sampling and stuff, which is a requirement anyway, so it's... But it's $500, that's a check of that.
And we don't have no choice, do we, uh...
No, there's no choice, no.
And we've got the monitoring wells in there already, so it's just a matter of them...
Yeah, dip them, yeah.
Dipping some water out of the wells and testing it.
I think it's a good thing myself. I really do.
They don't need the rest of us, just you, right?
I talk, yeah. And the Bennetton County Sheriff's, uh... We got their, uh... Report, one animal problem, one 9/11 hangup, three agency assists, one public assist, one verbal alarm, uh... Two motor vehicle complaints, three noise complaints, three VIN verifications, uh... Directed patrols all over town, 56 traffic stops all over town, one aggravated domestic 17 ATV complaints, uh... FYI, we will not engage in a pursuit with any ATV or motorcycle. So, traffic tickets as follows, we have 25 speeding tickets, three no registration, two operating licenses suspended, four no insurance, 30 written verbal warnings, two cellphone while driving texting, uh... Property checks, they check what? Village Market, Winchester's, Quality Auto, Stewart's, Tam, Center Auto, Next Door, Beer and Wine, Town Office, Oak Hill Head Start, Pownell School, Pownell Rescue, Dollar General, Peaceful Valley, The Roost, Pownell Valley, Pownell View Barn, Pownell Fire, Hillside House, Winchester's, Torni Beans, Pownell Pets, Jellies Auto, American Legion, and residents as requested, and Pownell Valley Fire. They've been focusing on the back roads, where we've been asked to watch for speeders and ATV use, and some of the main roads were County Road and Brookman Road, Middle Pownell Road, Jackson Cross Road, South Stream Road, North Pownell Road, Barbers Pond Road, Center Street, Northwest Hill Road, and Montgomery Road. So I guess they've been all over the place. Road Foreman's report, uh... Did road grading, White Oaks, uh... And mowing on Cedar Hill and North Pownell, roadside mowing Cedar Hill onto the North Pownell, sweeping intersections and bridge in the White Oaks, contingent blacktop patching, clean up trees from the storm. Next week, he's road grading, uh... Cedar Hill and North Pownell, and continue roadside mowing, get some blacktop patching, and get the sand beds. That's the report from our road boss. Now, Pownell, we had the minutes here from the Pownell Town Office Committee. The committee reviewed the RAS, RASA drawings and combined the best ideas. Copey moved and Hutchinson seconded a motion to put the large meeting room in the center of the building with an enclosed hall running down the north and south sides. Motion passed by all. We all agree that most public offices would be off the halls downstairs, those being councilor, vault, administrative assistant, administrative treasurer, small meeting room, auditors upstairs would be the listers in a small meeting room, the break-in kitchen area. This is the, uh... The plan that they looked at. We're gonna schedule a meeting with Lynn Sync Group for next week. So they'll probably be sending us another letter, tell us what you're doing.
It's a different week.
Yeah, this is another week.
Yeah, that was, week 15 is the one you read, Ronnie.
Oh, alright. I read the Road Foreman's report for week 15.
Unless it was the 22nd.
This is for the 22nd. And, uh... Road grading was Northwest Hill Road, Crum Road, Montgomery Valley View, White Oaks, Benedict Road, Persil, Dudley, Mason Hill South, Lincoln Street, and Cedar Hill. Roadside mowing, Skiffery Road, Mount Anthony and Cedar Hill, drawing gravel, sweeping intersections. And that's pretty much what he said he was gonna do, and he did, I guess. So then this week, next week coming, roadside grading, Carpenter Hill, Carpenter Hill West, Tubbs Road, Indian Massacre Road, roadside mowing, blacktop patching, and some ditching. That was submitted by Joel, our road boss.
He'll probably tell us, but do we know when they're gonna start paving?
Maybe tomorrow.
They've got a lot more markings on the roads, so I see that they must be getting ready. They got it marked out, the North Pownell Road's marked out on top.
They could round up flaggers, they were starting tomorrow.
So I'm thinking that'll be very soon.
She's thinking tomorrow.
Okay, well... I hope it doesn't interfere with our fall foliage, that's all.
It'll just make them stop and look at the foliage longer.
That's it. If we get any foliage. Okay, uh... Springer Law Offices, uh... They, uh... File their application for this, uh... This is for that tower stuff, right?
For the cell tower?
Yeah, the tower submission package. They signed all that stuff and, uh... They enclosed a copy of this letter and there's been, uh... For just about everybody and there's... It's past its, uh... No complaints, I guess, as far as, uh...
Historic findings?
Historic, uh... Things, and also, I guess, there was no complaints about where it was gonna... Where it was gonna be due to the blume, things like that. So that's, no historic properties are affected, Vermont Division of Historic Preservation. So, BCRC, they got another public meeting notice and agenda that are on October 11th, 2016, at the Arlington Town Hall. And that's, uh... Just their meeting, if anybody wishes to go into that.
This is the Solid Waste Alliance.
That's the Solid Waste? Oh yes, it is, Bennetton County Solid Waste Alliance. So, who I'm sure will have someone going there.
Yeah, so what Tom talked about.
Yeah. Tom will probably go or something. Knowledge wave. This is, uh...
Customer service class that we're going to have for all the staff.
Yeah, that's it. This is that class that we're having for all the staff, uh... Which is, uh... Coming up very shortly. October 31st, Halloween, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. It's a one-day thing, it'll be held down at the library, wasn't it?
Pownell Rescue Squad.
Rescue Squad, that's her, Pownell Rescue Squad, so...
It's a costume party, we're supposed to dress up. Kidding.
But I think, I think it'll be good, uh... A good thing.
Have we notified all these people?
No, I'm going to write a letter from the board.
Okay, thanks, go for it.
I'm gonna do an invitation from them.
Well, the thing is, at the same time, we're gonna ask if they can make it. And if they can't, we'll find other members.
Right, because we're only allowed 12 or 15.
That's right, 12, I think.
12, yep.
And we wanted to be for sure to fill it.
Right.
Okay?
We wanna fill the class with 12 people.
If there's some people that have some other, uh... Things going on, they can't make it, we'll find, maybe we can find somebody else.
And we'll provide lunch, it's an all-day course.
You leaving, huh? No.
I'll have my lunch here.
Okay.
You're invited.
Okay. You're invited.
This, that thing across 1,605 dollars.
Yep.
Uh... Now, we need a motion to sign it.
I'll make a motion to sign.
Second.
It's part of the continuing education process and everything, and we felt it was good for all of our staff to take the class.
Okay, well, that's it for the mail. So... Now... This, uh... I'll save that, uh... Route 346 Mobile Home Site, because that, we're gonna talk about contract there with the realtor, so I think we should go into executive session and finish that up, to see what we agreed to do on that. I think that'll be last.
Okay.
Now, as far as, uh... The town office carpet, uh... I'm under the understanding that we got somebody that's gonna come here and, uh...
Clean it? We have an estimate here. Did you get one of those?
I probably did.
I got one.
Well, there's an estimate here to shampoo and deodorize it, sanitize and mildew treatment and, uh... For $212.45, which I think we shouldn't hesitate a moment, get that done.
Do we need a motion to approve?
Well, the, the plan is, um... To do it over Columbus Day weekend, so that it has plenty of time to dry. Ronnie's gonna be able to bring in a couple of fans.
I got a couple of them fans, we'll have to let them run for the... Cause the place should be closed on Monday, so they'll do it on...
Yeah, it'll be closed on Monday.
Saturday, probably.
Yep, they move the air around, dry it out.
Okay.
So they're gonna come in 9:30 on Saturday and, uh... Do it, and, um... My recommendation was that if the stains rea... If a lot of stains reappear for the money, just have it done again. This hasn't been done in like 12 years. So, you know, it'll... It'll be okay, they're gonna put up a mildew cleaner in it. It's sanitized, so...
I'll let our cleaning company know, because they've been cleaning on Saturday, so I'll let them know that, um... They're gonna clean that weekend.
You got something, this pad?
Yes, does that include patching in this section here?
I'm under the understanding that a resident has a piece of that carpet.
I, I think there's some back stock up in the attic. I'm not positive, but I think there is.
Well, Nelson told me, of course, he was, he was pretty sick the other, the other day, a couple weeks ago or something. But we got, uh... A resident had a piece of that. That was left over from when they carpeted the thing, it's probably a little brighter than what we got here, but he did save it, and I guess it's in, in shape, which, we'll try to get that whole patched.
I, I, I think there's some up in the attic too.
Well, that's good.
I know I've got the tiles up in the attic for the, uh... Bathroom, you know, where the, where the trapdoor is that's peeling tiles off.
Well, that's good, cause that should, that should be covered up too, so...
Yeah, I, I do have them up in the attic, and I think there's some of this carpet up there too. It's been a long time since I've been up there, but...
Well, Nelson was sure that, uh... A piece big enough to cover that to start with, if there's a... I mean, that's what he told me two weeks ago, or three weeks ago, when I seen him last. Okay, well, we, we hope to get that done and, uh... I'm sure it'll be better, because they're gonna use, uh... Some mildew thing, but they're also, uh... They have some mold killer or something that you can use in that machine. And it, and they, and they claim it really works good. So then we should be, a little bit, should be a little more healthy in here, that's all.
We just need to continue getting what we need to finish up downstairs, so it...
Yeah, so it'll work to keep it dry, and that's pretty near done down there, that's all.
Yeah, I thought Tom said we were almost done down there.
Well, the plastic is laid down, he was gonna put in a...
Dehumidifier.
A dehumidifier or a fan or something, well, on a humistad. The, the, uh... The louvers in are, are in and stuff to let air through.
Okay.
But to move the air, it's gonna, they were gonna do something, it was gonna have our electrician there wire up out there or something, down there. So that should be all set.
So we think we need to let Tom know that since the board decided to do the carpet, that he doesn't need to be checking into floors, flooring.
Okay.
I agree.
Well, that's, that's what we'll do.
You don't need a motion to do this, right? We could just do it in a...
Well, it's only a couple hundred dollars, and we already spoke to the...
I'm just asking, yep.
To the lady there, and, uh... We told her if it...
Yeah, it's all scheduled.
Come out pretty good.
Good.
But there was still a few stains, if you don't mind even do it twice for that, that price. So anyway, and the status of the brick project, I've been on this board forever and I still wanna know, and you were one of the last ones to join that brick project, how's it going?
He's gonna put me on the spot, Bill, did you see that? Well, as a matter of fact, Mr. Chairman, I was down to the rec park last Friday morning with Bill's lovely wife, Ruth and Cindy Brownall. And while they're doing the hydro down there, they've now tore it all up and moved all the bricks, all the rocks and everything that are around through to run the electrical line down through. Um... The guy from the company has agreed to put the bricks back in. Ruth wanted me to look and see where we were gonna put the bricks. She's still not sure who exactly is going to put them in, but we've decided to put them in front of... There's a big sign there about the town of Pownell, and there's two trees. Dave Dentz is going to come down and trim the trees way back, cause they've gone in so much. And Joel told us that he thought that Bruce could put the bricks in, but, um... Ruth wanted to check with him, cause she wasn't sure whether he would be able to do them the way we wanted them. We're trying to draw out a diagram.
Well...
But once that project was all done, we were hoping that Bruce could put them in.
I also talked to the road boss there, and he says, I think it's, uh... Well, it used to be Morris Bach, uh... They do, by the trestle there, they sell concrete supplies and bricks and stuff.
And pavers and things.
Whatever. And I guess they, they actually sell a grid, plastic grid. So you've got your spot cleaned out and you drop the plastic grid in and you put the the bricks in, and then, uh... You put your sand in, that keeps them all placed, then your, your sand works down there.
Right.
So he was telling me about that, and I says, "Look, it's about time. I would like to see that done before I'm done." You know what I mean? It would be nice, it's been a long time.
It has been a long time and...
I think it oughta get moving and I'm...
Well, it's been on, it's been, uh... Since, uh... For two years now, while I've been back here and, and it's just been doot, 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 you know, so I think that we're getting closer, but let's just... And we've got someone that will, uh... Well, we believe we've got someone, you know what I'm saying?
We've had trouble finding people to do it.
Okay, so I'm sure now that we can get it done and let's move forward.
Mm-hmm.
Very good.
Okay, now, new business, we got Jim Gilbert's gonna tell us something about roadside dumping procedure.
Yeah. I have been, uh... Involved in roadside dumping now for, ever since I've been the health officer, which is coming up on 25 years now. Um... And it's just getting to the point where it's really making me ugly. And... Back when Al LaFontaine was the constable, if I went through a bag of garbage and found somebody's name on a piece of paper in that garbage, I would give it to Al, and he would go knocking on their door and tell them that they either had to remove the garbage or he was gonna find them. And over the past about three weeks, I have cleaned up three piles of garbage off the sides of Indian Massacre Road, North Pownell Road, and Dean Road. And it's bugging me, it's really, really bugging me. But fortunately, when I pick it up off the side of the road and I take it to the transfer station, the boys let me dump it for free, you know?
Right.
Because I'm cleaning up the road sides. I went through all of the stuff and I came up with some names, and I tried to get the state police to do something about it. They won't do anything about it, because it's not a state road. So I went to the sheriff's department, and it took me almost a week to get through to somebody in the sheriff's department that was willing to at least take a look at the paperwork that I pulled out of the garbage. You know, I put my rubber gloves on and I go through the stuff, and I pull out names and this and that and the other thing. And... I don't know if the sheriff's department has done anything with the information that I gave them, I have no idea, they don't follow through on it. They don't get back to me and let me know that they've done something about it. What I am proposing, and it's entirely up to you guys, is that we develop a town ordinance against roadside dumping on town roads. And I will be glad to take on the responsibility of writing tickets to people that I can identify from the garbage. If I can't identify anybody, I'll just take it over to the transfer station and dump it. But if I can come up with names of people that belong to the garbage, I will ticket them. And we'll get some sort of a fine. And the town gets it, you know? I'm gon', I'm gonna do it anyway. But there's no reason why, you know, people should be dumping their crap on the side of the roads. It's disgusting, it really is disgusting. I have gone out and I have picked up crappy diapers off the sides of the roads and loaded them into a garbage bag and taken them over to the transfer station. I'm not afraid to do stuff like that, I put on my heavy-duty rubber gloves and then when I go home, I wash everything off with bleach, you know? But I can't stand to see it on the sides of the road, it, it drives me nuts. And I would really like it if the board would consider, uh... Developing some sort of a town ordinance against roadside dumping, and I would be glad to enforce it for you.
Well, I'm gonna tell you, personal experience, uh... I have a place down there in Indian Massacre Road, and a good friend of mine was living there, and he went out and he... Cause they throw it in that swamp, which makes it even worse, you gotta go out there, your boots are high and go out and get it. And he went through that stuff, and he was pretty sure who'd throw it out there, and we called the state police. The state police did come down, but the state police says it isn't a thing we can do without. And their reasoning was because, uh... Somebody could've taken their trash. It doesn't have to be, there, you know, I mean, if you hire somebody, there's some, there's some unscrupulous people, I know there is, myself. And, uh... But... And, but, so you don't, you can't really track it.
Provide me with, provide me with proof that you hired somebody to all this stuff away.
Well, see, now we're getting into...
Provide me with the proof.
Before I would get, I mean, look, I'm all, I'm all against, you know, throwing stuff outside the road. That's, that's ridiculous. Shouldn't happen anywhere in the country, never mind Powell. Shouldn't happen anywhere. And, but it does. And, but how, what, what is our standing as a... I don't know. I'd have to have somebody, somebody tell me laws and I'm not, I'm not crazy about, uh, this, probably you don't like that, Jim, but I'm not crazy about us having a bunch of ordinances. Because first of all, they are hard to, to enforce and sometimes in a small town, I think it's worse than in a bigger town, because everybody knows everybody. You know, while my friends do it, that's okay, but those are people, not, not a great fan of that, see?
I hear you, Ron. I really, really do, right? I know where you're coming from.
But I don't mind, I don't mind looking at and asking, you know, around and see what the story is. But, oh, there it is, right there. She found a bunch of stuff there. That's, that's all, which I'm not gonna read all that right now, throwing, dumping, burning and stuff.
It's a, it's just a model.
It's a model, which, you know... But I think we oughta look at this stuff and if there is something that we can do, uh, I'm all for it.
Well, I've set my pace, you know?
Yeah.
I disagree with you, Ron.
I'm willing, I'm willing to...
You knew I would.
I'm willing to take it on.
I'm sick of the garbage down the side of the road and the dumping and, and...
Everybody is.
You know, and whatever we can do to help clean it up, I think we should do it.
Yep. There's a, there's a whole bunch of people in town that we get together a couple of times a year and do a roadside cleanup, not just on Green Day.
Right.
But, you know, we go, we, we did Indian Massacre Road, we did North Powell Road, you know, there's a guy that, that does Nile School Road all the time and the guys at the, at the transfer station let him dump the stuff that he picks up for free.
So, there isn't Vermont statute?
Yeah. It's, 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 it's just a matter of, you know...
You see this $500 fine on the highway, so, where we drive in my place, uh...
Well, sure, there's, there's laws.
You see, it's dumping all over the place. You know, what I'm saying is, is even on the state highways, we see that, so...
Yeah.
What, do we have any signage or anything posting?
Just the state signage.
What would it cost us to put signs around? I know people should know better anyway, but...
I have no idea.
I just think, I think you're right. I think we should do something. I think we should enforce it at least. I'm tired of the junk. I'm tired of the garbage. And I, whatever I can do to help for the board, I think we should try to help. That's my two cents.
Thank you, Sue.
I'm only one person on this board.
I know.
Well, I know it's a problem and I know that there's, there's signs. They have no littering signs, they have no dumping signs different places. Where it's really been done a lot, you see places where it says no dumping and I think the people that wanna dump, they seem that it tracks them there. Because it seems like there's more stuff there afterwards than there was before they put the sign up. I mean, I hate to say it, but it's, it's a fact.
It's almost like putting a...
I think the best thing that we could do as a community is, you know, if you see somebody dumping something, we'll turn them in. They turn people in for everything.
I think, you know, I'll tell you what I, you know, the thing is, if we're gonna talk about it, we, we, we need to do some kind of an action, you know? And I don't mean fines and all this stuff at the moment, but I do think that when you do find this stuff alongside the road or wherever you find it, I think you should bring it to the Board of Selectmen.
No, not the bag of garbage, please.
No.
Okay, all right, but, okay. But, but whatever paperwork you've got and that way, we, the town will know that we do have some problems going on here and it'll help us determine just how serious this problem is. And, uh, and I'm not trying to dodge not doing something, but I think that at this moment, maybe if we just bring it to light, um, people will be aware that, you know, I know all about trash, you know?
I mean, just, just today, I was coming back up from Williamstown and I'm going past the Mack Golding plant and there's a mattress. And a quarter of the mattress was in the traveled roadway.
Mm-hmm.
A quarter of the mattress was in the traveled roadway. I pulled off, I wasn't gonna pick it up, but I pulled off and I got it flopped over onto the bank. You know, it's on a state highway. How many state trucks drove past that mattress in the past two or three days?
Mm-hmm.
You think they'd pick it up? Give me a break, you know? And it's, it's a road hazard.
Well, I think, uh...
You know, somebody could hit it and flip their car for crying out loud.
I mean, I don't, I don't wanna start, you know, saying too much and then, you know, all of a sudden we'll have a list this long.
No, but I mean, it's just...
For the, for our highway department, but I do think that the people that travel our roads, that work for the town, could give us more information than probably all the policemen in the world. Because, I mean, there isn't a high, or, you know, there isn't a town road that our workers don't travel. And if there is something such as a mattress, you know, I think if we, you know, I think we should, um...
But, I mean, our guys are not responsible for Route 346.
No, 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 no. I'm talking about, I'm talking about Massacre Road down there and, you know, the roads that you're talking about here. Uh, down highways, so anyways, I, I think it'd be good.
What do you guys have to say, Bill?
I just wanted to say is that I'm glad you're having this discussion. I think the people really want their roads to be in good shape and bringing it forward. You said something earlier, you know, about you don't know, once you bring information like you brought to Al, to the sheriffs, you know, what the next piece is. I noticed earlier you have a report from the sheriff's department and I was wondering if they have a clear understanding of your expectation when, at least to start with, when Jim brings them something of what action did they take for the money that you're paying for them and whether you see it or not are making it clear as part of your contract with them. And it would seem, you know, at least getting that understanding would be helpful for both the sheriff and, and the town for at least that piece of it.
Well, my thoughts on that are if we should bring that, make sure that, we should talk to the sheriff's department, Chad there, and ask them what the deal is.
Yeah.
And, you know, and if people, and also, I think sometimes, some people, all you gotta do is you gotta let them know.
Well, it's the constable, too.
Some people, you know, they, they throw stuff out, but you know, if they're on to them, you know what I mean? Hey, look, you're not, we're gonna take action. You can't do this stuff. As far as, you know, being, you know, this, this Big Brother thing where you're gonna come in and lock them up and throw them in jails, though, hey, that ain't gonna happen. But if, if you do know that you're on to them, look, we found your trash, this and that, maybe that would help something. I don't know.
Take a picture of yourself, please.
And I know some of the stuff, like Jim was hollering about the mattress there. Well, there for a while, when Tam first opened up, there was quite a lot of stuff right down through the dugway, all the way down to where they turned down in the Tams. They weren't properly covering their loads. But the complaints went to Tam and he got after them haulers coming out of Massachusetts, which is, is fine. I mean, they're, they're in a bit, but they can cover their loads. I think that's the way we handle these problems better off than, and also, they, well, one guy picked up a job. They give him a few dollars and he, he walks that road picking up stuff, you know? He doesn't have anything to do anyway. He walks from the state line, but, I mean, they give him 50 bucks a week or something, just walking anyway, picks up some stuff, puts it in the bag, then they pick it off. Tam will pick it off, I guess. That was the agreement that was made, I guess. I don't know. But would you, that was all helping and it did, that made a big difference because there was a lot of things like he was talking about, bigger stuff. I don't think they were even covering some of them loads. And you get going 50 miles an hour, I mean, come on, this stuff flies out.
I think I recall one of our local people telling us that someone was picking up garbage on Seven and you have to be very careful going through it because of finding dirty needles and things like that in it. So, we'd have to be careful of that, but...
Well, see, that's the, that's the thing with all this stuff. I mean, but I think if we, well, I think the, the best thing that we can do, well, right now, we're discussing and everything, we're letting, trying to let people know that we're aware of it, we don't like it. I think 90% of the people in town don't like it. So, it isn't a little minority, it isn't just the people sitting around this table.
It's probably 99%, Ron.
Probably.
You know, you know what I'm saying?
Most, most everybody. I mean, come on. And, and we make it pretty easy for people to be able to dispose of stuff in a proper way.
Oh, yeah, I mean, our, our transfer station is so reasonable, it's not even funny.
Right.
You know?
Nowadays, you can take a picture with your cellphone and send it to us and watching somebody dump something. When, when you were taking it to Al, do you think it was less? Thinking it was getting after him?
It's about the same. It's about the same. You know, but he would, I mean, he went over to Husick Falls one time packing his heat in his, in his uniform and he knocked on the people's door and he said, "You get that crap out of those woods or I'm gonna find ya."
Yeah.
And, I mean, he didn't have any authority to do that, but he did it anyway. You know Al?
Yeah.
Well, I guess we've discussed that pretty well and I think everybody feels the same way, but I think we oughta also get a little of Chad and ask him.
That's the key.
See what he says.
Great idea, just to speak with the sheriff's department.
Well, I, I, I thank you for your consideration. I truly do.
And I think, I think you've got a good point. Right. But I think the only thing that we're trying to say is we're just gonna try to approach this a little differently at the moment. Maybe it'll work, maybe it won't.
At least it's been brought to the public.
That's right, and that's great. Thanks, I appreciate it.
We got policy review.
I think we're probably gonna have to hold off till we have a full board, like we said.
Yeah.
I've got, I've got copies of the policies and...
Because I'm sure that they're missing this. Hate, you know?
Yeah, I don't...
I'd hate to do anything when they're...
You know, just because they're absent, I don't want them to get out of doing something, so...
Okay, so I guess we'll need a motion to go into executive session and talk about that, real estate down there, so we can get that movement to them, all right?
Okay, we're all set.
Unless anybody else, if somebody else has got anything to say, you all set?
I'll second you all, Ellen. Tax bills gone out? They went out this week?
Oh, yes.
Are we still on the air?
Um, tax bills went out and a couple more went out today because they came back. Um, so if you don't have your tax bills by the beginning of October, please call 823-5326. Leave a message and I will get you a tax bill.
And the due date?
The due date is November 10th. Um, we accept postmark. Some of this information is on the town website. Um, also, there's a drop box in here, over in the far corner behind my desk. If I'm not here, you can just drop it in the drop box.